Okay.
Today is Monday, May fifteenth. Time is one oh six. And I call to order the Education Committee. We'll start by having that invocation and then we'll get into the approval of the minutes. If you could, please bow your head. Father God, we just come to you today just thanking you for this amazing opportunity to be here amongst the land of the living. We just thank you, God, that this Education Committee is one that is beneficial to each and every person that hears it. That the information that goes forth is something that improves the quality of life of each and every person. And that we all find our way to add value in the space of education in the city of Birmingham. We just thank you, we praise you, and we love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Counselors, I know that the minutes have been sent out. Wanted to see if you all had an opportunity to review those? And if so, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All the players say aye?
Aye.
Alright. So today we have two presentations. We have two presentations. So the first presentation that we have is from the Birmingham Board of Education. The Birmingham Board of Education President, Ms. Neonton Williams, has blessed us with her presence. And so, we'd just love to be able to get some information, some feedback from you about, you know, the school year. And, you know, we're going into summertime.
Yes.
And so, some of the different things that, you know, parents can be in expectation of and kind of do to keep their little ones involved. So I'll pass it over to you now.
Oh, sure. Well, thank you. First of all, thank you so much for allowing us to come here and share. I know that the invitation has always been extended to us. It's just that I was able to accept this time. And I would make sure that our colleagues know that you all meet as well on a monthly, sometimes quarterly basis. But a lot of great things happening in Birmingham City Schools. And so, this presentation that I have is not what I put together. I have to give credit where credit is due. And so, I reached out to the Communications Department and asked Ms. Stewart and her team if they could put something together for us that kind of gave a high level sharing out of things that have been accomplished thus far. Because we are obviously about maybe two to three weeks away from graduation, believe it or not, for twenty-three. And we still have some numbers still coming in on the number of scholarships that our students have earned. And the millions already there, but not a solid number. So I don't know if it's best for me to sit and look over, or stand, or whatever's comfortable for me. Okay, or for you all. Okay. So are you gonna, would you, uh-huh, yep. And so, there is also a hard copy, if you all want to look. And then I have some typewritten notes that I'll just speak from here, but you can go right ahead to the next slide. It's just about ten or eleven slides that we have to share, and they're fairly quick. But you all know who my colleagues are, but I don't sit here and represent just me. It is the entire Birmingham City School Board, as well as Dr. Sullivan and his entire cabinet, that brings the pleasure to be able to share this information this afternoon. Next slide, please. So, success starts here. You all probably have heard that tag going on all across the city of Birmingham through commercials, via radio, and also on television. But recently, and I think I will stand, if that's okay, because the light is a little bit there. But we are, as I just shared, and we're looking at getting that final tally of the number of scholarships in our class of twenty-two thirty. Students are receiving, but many of our scholars also receive recognition throughout the community. So last month, there were four students from Birmingham City Schools who received the Rotary Act Scholarship, which is a four-year scholarship for two thousand dollars per year. And these students, Jayden Perkins, Martin, Zena Terry, Simeon Williams, those three students are Ramsey High School, and I dare not say, uh, Hasato, I believe. Diallo of Jackson Owen, and Guadalupe Martinez, Gardona of Woodland, were also scholarship recipients from the Rotary Club. So we're really grateful for that. And then Markel Scott of Huffman High School was named Co-Used of the Year by the Birmingham Water Club. And so, what we wanted to share is that, you know, partnerships matter. And so, the district is not doing these things alone. And so, as we continue to build relationships and have ability with the relationships that we do have, they are in turn working with our scholars and affording opportunities that are not always there. And one of our students from, I know Ms. Zena Terry is going to Tuscany University, and I see with her, she plans to receive her degree in nursing after four years. And Ms. Perkins is actually going to Yale. And so, it's really exciting to be able to highlight not just those two students, but all of the scholars that are receiving some scholarships from partners in the community. Next slide. Wanted to talk about Huffman Academy and Oliver Elementary Schools. Two schools were named Schools of Distinction by the State Board of Education. So the next couple of slides are gonna highlight some schools that have been recognized on a national level and state level. And essentially, they're being evaluated based on the rigor that the academics offer in the district, and particularly at the schools, and how data is used to actually assess how rigorous the learning should be in the classrooms. These are sometimes information that doesn't necessarily get out to the community. People tend to think, oh, if you go to school, every single school is every single way, no matter what it is. But BCS, this board is really, really working. Should I speak louder?
No, it's okay.
Okay. There, we are really, really working to try to, as we seek to close the academic gaps, we're really looking at ways that the way education being delivered can become more rigorous. And so, these two schools, Huffman Academy and Oliver Elementary, were recognized as schools that are really honing into that. So I think that lends itself to the leaders that we have in those buildings and the team that's working with those educators in the school. Not to say that the others aren't, but these two were recognized by the State Board of Education for doing that. Next slide. And then also with CAGIA, again, CAGIA is, and I think they put that in there on purpose, that's cool picture. CAGIA is also a national-recognized entity who, again, evaluates rigor that schools are using in academics. And so, the scale goes from obviously zero to four hundred, and Birmingham City Schools receive, our district received, the three hundred and thirty-five. So that means across the board, we're really trying to increase the rigor that is attached to every single child in the school. And so, looking at those best practices, looking at what the data says, and how, again, we can continue to close that gap and look at individualized learning for our students. This picture, though, you could go to the next slide, but you all, you remember where that was from. We were at Hudson K. And that was the opening of our STEM library, which again is in partnership with, um,
Verizon.
Verizon, yes, this was Verizon, but it's also in partnership with AFBAR, working together. And so, the Birmingham City Schools Academy, so you all, I'm sure you know this, and sometimes it helps, because even as a board member, it helps to kind of hear some of this information reiterated. A lot of times, we hear the community saying, we need vocational ed, we need vocational ed. And that was a term used when I was in school, which was not that long ago. I think I'm still young. But today, it's a different term. It's called CTE, Career Technology Education. And so, all of our high schools have these academies, and we also are looking at our middle schools mirroring the academies so that students can start to get earlier exposure in middle school before they get into high school to determine potentially what career path they would like to go down. But Winona High School Academy of Hospitality and Tourism, and then Ramsey Academy of Engineering, and Woodlands Academy of Business and Finance, receive this NAF Catherine Glassik Distinguished Level Recognition. So again, it means that on a national level, these particular academies are comparing with other national academies across the country. What it takes for our other academies to get there, I'm not sure. I'm not gonna stand before you as if I'm a subject matter expert. I think that part of it is probably ensuring that our students know that this is available for them and to begin to enroll in those classes and taking advantage of them. I'm very surprised that Huffman isn't on there because of our Academy of Construction and Architecture, where students are actually building tiny homes. Went to visit about a month ago, and our students are, I think they completed their third tiny home. And these are actually going into communities where people are going to live in them. The very first one was transported to North Carolina, but they are, they have definitely been suited to be able to create more tiny homes. And I actually told them they should probably talk to some colleges and universities, because a lot of them have problems with housing for their students. And so, what an opportunity it could be for our students to be a part of that. I know it's not on here, but I'm just highlighting that because in the visit, what I learned, and it wasn't my first, it was, I think, it was the second time, but what I learned in that last visit is that our students are getting the experiences from like the ruder to the tool, if that makes sense. Like they're literally operating as contractors. So when they're going, they're going to Home Depot and Lowe's, and they're using like the company credit card to make the purchases unaccompanied by the professor or the teacher at Huffman. Like they are actually getting that experience themselves, so they know to go into the contractor side to purchase contractor quantities and getting the contractor amounts for what they're purchasing to build those tiny homes. And so, it is an entire, it's like a drawn view of every single thing that's connected to the work that would happen if they were an independent contractor or working with another contractor, which I think is priceless. Next slide. So just wanted to give you all an update on our capital projects. Right now, we have committed about eighty-two million dollars in facility upgrades. And so, just to highlight, there's a new gym, cafeteria, and other enhancements that are almost complete at Huffman High School. I'm sorry, Huffman Middle School, and then Woodland High School new stadium will be ready for fall sports. So that was a really big, I remember when we first got thrown in, that was like the first thing we had to learn on. It was very contentious, and we had to, I felt like at the time, we made the right decision, my colleagues and I. But of course, we had to get additional information, but excited to say that we eventually approved. And Woodland High School is going to have a new stadium. These are like literally two very, very high-level highlights. But, and I meant to bring, but I can get over to you all for every single district, every single capital project that's happening in all of our schools. So we're doing things like window replacements, new roofing, new gym floors. I want to say all of our middle schools got new gym floors and the type of floors so they can be multipurpose, so they can have like a dance party on it, they can skate on it, and at the same time for various programs that might take place, as well as being prepared for athletic competition. Next slide. Any questions you all have to, let me just kind of.
So I know you said that the Woodland Field or Stadium would be done by fall?
Yes.
Okay.
So the very first football game should be played at Woodland High School. We've been behind the scenes, like, where we at? What we doing? So very first football, that first home game should be played at Woodland High School. We hope to have a great turnout. Of course, they're gonna give ribbon-cutting ceremony for that. And on last week, there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the naming of the Rodney Chedum Stadium. For we know, not Rodney, Mr. Chedum, I just gotta say his last name, because I think his first name starts with a R, but I may be getting him mixed with someone else. But at Winona High School, there was a ribbon-cutting for the, and then they have their, Ronald?
Ronald.
Ronald Chedum?
Ronald.
Ronald, just say Ronald. Okay, alright. Get it right. It's hard. Coach, right for coach, that's right for coach. Excited to share, this is, this is big, you know, for people all across the country. Districts are having to make adjustments and make financial investments in areas that we oftentimes don't think about. But safety and security obviously is a part of Birmingham City Schools' mission. And we want to ensure that every single school has the proper security that it needs. And so, we have invested about two point four million dollars into new metal detectors for all of our high schools. And what we intend to do with the metal detectors that we have in our, in our high schools is move them down into our elementary and middle schools. We want to make sure that at every level, all of our schools are properly secured. And also from our students, right? So making certain that they are not mistakenly breaking or intentionally bringing weapons that could be of any level of destruction into the school system. And so, many of our elementary and middle schools were not, are not currently equipped. And so, we needed to make that investment so that they could have metal detectors and detectors that are able to protect other items as well, so not just weapons. But, and then, and a personal push is that we are looking at trying to secure additional resources so that we could actually have, we have contracted our security services in our high schools to assist when school starts in the morning and throughout the day, and then when schools are out getting out, and then of course, any extracurricular activities taking place there. But I, me, some of us feel like we need the same thing for our middle schools as well. So in addition to that equipment being shared out to our middle and elementary schools, we're also looking at how we can bring in additional staff to support that. Next slide. And then partnerships with BCS, and I, I got some additional notes here. I thought I was gonna be reading from my door. I think I'm doing pretty good. Yeah, I see. Oh, right, truly. Thank you, thank you. So we have quite a few partnerships with, obviously, the city of Birmingham. United Way of Central Alabama, AFBAR, Jones Valley Teaching Farm, and UAB supports our BCS scholars to help them learn and prepare and grow. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what that looks like from the city of Birmingham. You all are supporting us through the HEED program, and so we're very grateful for that. That, obviously, and I know you all know this, but that's designed to assist our students with conflict resolution. When I'm in the school, I definitely hear some positive feedback on what that has been, how that has been supporting the students and curtailing some of the disciplinary challenges that we've been having in the schools. And then, of course, our Page Pals Program, which is designed to assist and afford community members to come out and volunteer and assist our students in reading. You all are very likely familiar with the Alabama Liberty Act and the Alabama Liberty Act, which is two state, middle state policies that are designed to close the academic gap. But essentially, starting next year with the Liberty Act, if our students are not on grade level in third grade by the time they take the A-CAP testing, then it is being proposed that those students are held back in the third grade so that they can get where they need to be. And so, of course, leading the partnership that we have with our Page Pals Program and with United Way of Central Alabama, we invested about one point five million dollars in what we call high-dosis tutoring. And that's where college students from across the city and area, a little bit outside of Birmingham. So we've got UAB, Miles College, Jeff State, Lawson State, and I'm missing, San Free University, Birmingham Southern. College students are able to, we say volunteer, but they actually pay a very small stipend. I think it's small, but it's affordable for a college student to actually go and spend a minimum of, they could do up to twenty hours in the school volunteering. And it's based on that student schedule of availability, so they work directly in partnership with the principals and the leaders at the schools. And then those principals identify students who have sort of came up on the radar that are potentially in that category of being held back or following behind, and they partner with those students. And this is the second year that high-dosis tutoring has taken place. So some of those volunteers have been able to stay directly with the students that they've been working with. And again, it's on a, as that college student schedule is available, readily available to them. We also open it up for students who may be attending a college or university virtually, but still at home. Sometimes, you know, schools may shut down in person on the collegiate level because of maybe COVID or whatever other, not necessarily issues, but opportunities they have for students to get educated. So some students actually stayed at home, and so I wanted to, we wanted to make certain that if students chose to do that or if they were commuting, they could still participate in the high-dosis tutoring program. And then, of course, with Jones Valley Teaching Farm, they have their camp that typically happens over spring break, and then their camps they have over the summer. And they have a one hundred percent partnership with BCS, meaning that any student that wants to participate, they can do so at no cost. Whereas other students from across other districts may have to pay a fee to participate in that camp. Birmingham City Schools are able to participate at no cost, and so we try to make sure we give that out. And then, again, the partnership with Birmingham, I'm sorry, with UAB takes place as well with volunteering and tutoring and helping our students with math and reading, because we really want to try to give a lot of attention to that. Next slide. So we're always registering school history, you know, people can always go in and register for the upcoming academic school year. Wanted to just have that slide in there so people know that success starts here. People are watching virtually, they can scan that QR code, they can go in and register their students for school if they would like to. And then the next slide should be talking about some things that we have happening over what we're calling Sensational Summer Learning. Instead of calling it summer school, we wanted to make sure people know that it's a whole lot more than summer school that is taking place here. And so, I wanted, so I wanna make sure I read a lot, some of this off we. So, we are offering four intercession periods where students can receive enrichment and recovery and learning. We have almost what feels like grown into year-round school. It's not official, but because of academics and how we want to make certain that students, potentially when you're out of school for a month, a month and a half, statistics say that students have about two grade levels of learning loss just from being out of school for about forty-five days of the summer, thirty to forty-five days of summer. And so, we want to make sure at every turn that every student has an opportunity to be involved in some type of academic learning that is rigorous, but also fun at the same time, because nobody wants to think that they're doing school all year long. And so, at every one of our high schools, not sorry, high schools, but at each of our schools, the opportunity for continued learning is happening this summer. If students decide there are specific programs they want to participate in, and there's actually transportation provided, every program is gonna provide breakfast and lunch for students over the summer. I know that's really important for our families because we understand the communities in which we serve. So that is important for parents to know and the community to know that it's available to them. So we do have the traditional summer school enrichment. We also are going to have a superintendent's academy and much more during the sensational learning. So again, it's not summer school, it's a lot more. It's free. And students can register by scanning that QR code, or they can register by going to BirminghamCitySchools.org. It's not on here because it has not been approved, but in our last, I'm speaking it because I believe it's gonna get approved. But in our last work session, we received a presentation from Miles College and Birmingham City Schools. I'm really proud of this because I'm a graduate of Miles College. But if you all are young enough to remember NYSP, National Youth Sports Program, that used to happen on both Lawson State Community College campus and Miles College campus. And it was really geared towards students having some way of being physically active and being inclined, but it also offered just a little bit of academics. Well, if you flip that and think about it being now more academics and less athletics, but it's also still going to, so the exciting thing about the partnership is that students are actually going to earn a college credit. And it starts from eighth grade through our twelfth-grade students. And it's, the cost is all on Birmingham City Schools. We know once this becomes public, we have, there are, I think there were six different courses that students could take, like English One-on-One, Math One-on-One, which are actually the core courses that are required when going into college. But they can get this early as eighth grade. And so, they're gonna get the college experience in a college classroom from college professors. And again, this is at no cost to students. It just requires registration. Transportation will be provided by Birmingham City Schools to get those students on campus to experience those classes. And more details are going to follow, but again, we have to approve it on Tuesday, the twenty-third, our next board meeting, which I'm, I feel confident, but you know, can't say prematurely what may happen. But another great opportunity for our students to be able to learn in Birmingham City. And I think that may be, that is it. That was the last slide. So parents and families can start registering right now for summer enrichment. In fact, we encourage parents to not, you know, wait until they're not really certain if they're gonna make that vacation trip or not. We would rather have financially, and the sooner we know, the better we can prepare for the amount of staff members that we need to hire over the summer to support the programs that we have in place. But everything is there, and of course, the traditional summer school for students who may be needing an extra credit or a credit or two to actually be able to be on a correct grade level when school starts back in the fall. All of those traditional classes are still available for them as well. So I hope I shared something that was new and exciting for Birmingham, the city of Birmingham and Birmingham City School students. And I'll answer any questions that I can, you all have any.
First of all, thank you so much for sharing that information. Now I'll open it up to my colleagues. I don't know if y'all have any questions, but Counselor Wood, pass it to you.
I'm just excited about the work that we're doing. We get a good chance to kind of follow along with the residents and kind of keeping up. But I said, it's kind of one of those things where it goes kind of goes hand in hand with things we're doing. We're all serving the same residents, and we have kind of concerns in Yellow's Court and concerns in our court. And it's kind of all working to improve it, so I mean, I'll keep building, and I think we're saying we can help it. You know, more and willing to plug in, but definitely excited to see a lot of the capital. Programs going on specifically at Huffman Middle, Huffman Academy, and Huffman High School. So we're pretty much guys.
That's good. When you were talking, I was thinking too, thank you. I don't, I don't think we had it highlighted there, but WJ Christian is one of the only schools in the state of Alabama that has gotten national recognition for its STEM program. So it's gonna be new. You know, one of the things that our leaders are trying to do, because there is education competition everywhere, right? And so, we want to make sure that what we have to offer for BCS students is just as competitive or enticing as what people may think is happening in other districts. So that we can level the playing field to entice families to want to stay within Birmingham City Schools and not exit and try some other things. But that's gonna be really big for the students and the staff to be able to participate in STEM. And of course, STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. When we look at workforce development across the state and even our career technological education programs, they're leading in that direction so that as early exposure as we can to our elementary and middle school students will make the difference in students being able to graduate with a certification that qualifies as career readiness for the state of Alabama, which is big. So, yes, and capital projects are huge that we definitely know. Those are always interesting conversations when we have our work sessions just around some things that we know we need to do. We want our buildings and our facilities to look really nice so students are, you know, want to come to school. They want to learn, and they feel like this is not only a safe, but a healthy environment for our students and staff to be able to work in.
I'll go first.
Yeah. So I just want to start out by acknowledging that, you know, you're a board member and not, you know, involved in the day-to-day operations of the school. So much like us as counselors, you know, you may not necessarily be you on the front lines of some of the questions that I have, so I get it.
Thank you.
We find ourselves in that position all the time. And often get in trouble for talking about stuff that, you know, we're not involved in. But I, I, I do, you know, appreciate the fact that you guys are making a substantial investment and making sure our schools are safe. I think that that's definitely, you know, an area that's of concern for parents. You know, not that the risk of, you know, some of the incidents that we've seen across the country are necessarily any greater in our schools, but they're certainly where, you know, one of, you know, a part of our lives that's most precious to us, you know, is concentrated. So it, you know, our schools deserve that extra layer of vigilance when it comes to making sure that our kids are safe. So definitely appreciate that additional investment and hope that, you know, we can continue to solve for that issue. Couple of things. Does the Birmingham City Schools, so in looking at sort of the big picture in terms of this service that Birmingham City Schools provides to our larger community, it seems to me that local employers are, or should be a vested stakeholder because, you know, this is where their future workforce, or a portion of their future workforce is gonna come from. So I'm curious to know whether or not local employers have like a stakeholder group, have an opportunity to engage with Birmingham City Schools in terms of making sure that the school system is oriented, you know, in that direction towards, you know, meeting their needs in terms of providing future workforce. Is there like an advisory group to Birmingham City Schools?
Yes. That, yes, that's, that's a great question, and, and yes, you are correct. So we have Ms. Adrian, I think her last name is Mitchell, in our Partnerships Department. And actually, last year, there was a community presentation on, it was during lunch hour, but it was a presentation amongst the partners who work with Birmingham City Schools from the employability landscape that you were, that you're asking about. But you're absolutely correct that, yes, there, I believe our local employees should be stakeholders as well. And I think we do have a group of stakeholders. I think that it could be increased. I do think that one pathway that we see, that we're hearing as a board that's trying to create a more robust partnership is through our CTE programs, through our career technology and education programs. Like recently with UAB, there's a partnership that is being proposed to work with our CTE programs around nursing. So Jackson Nolan has a nursing program, and Huffman High School also has a nursing program. And so, looking at how we can create pathways for those students to get those opportunities. So I, I think you're right. I don't know like how strong they are right now and exactly who those partners are, but I certainly could find out, we could find out from Ms. Mitchell and bring that back. I think that's important for the public to know that people are, that they are investing. And before you ask your second question, I wanted to go back to when we talked about security. And I think I probably should have mentioned this earlier too. For many of our schools, we didn't have what we now call a security bubble. So essentially, you could get buzzed into the school, and once you're in, you're directly, it would be like having direct access to one of your offices with. to one of your offices without someone out front. And so we invested millions of dollars to identify, not just to identify the schools that did not have them, but the schools that did not have them, they now have them. So there was infrastructure, um, built in so that when someone enters the school, they will actually enter another secure space where they have to kind of state what their purpose is and why they're there and who they need to see. And then they're able to come inside the actual building. Um, I can think of a, a couple of schools that I knew that were really in district two, but they were all across the district. But all of our schools have now created what we've, what are now being called security bubbles. But W J Christian did not have one. Um, Robinson Elementary, uh, did not have one. Um, uh, um, Putnam Middle School, and I don't know why I'm starting to name schools when we've got forty-three schools in the district. That's not safe to do, but there are quite a few that did not, but all of our schools now have what we are calling a security bubble. So again, to create that safe space, um, I have to give a shout out to our, um, to our chief and his entire team people. You know, they're always staying abreast of what's happening. And then, um, even colleagues have talked about, uh, some, some grant opportunities that have come through for us to even look at trying to secure more, um, safe spaces and security, uh, options for our students. I didn't mean to go back, but I wanted to make sure I shared that because again, people should know.
Sure. And I'm curious about the early college program. So full disclosure, I'm the parent of a Woodlawn High School student who's, um, participating in the, or, or the college program there. Um, and I think it's, you know, from my perspective, but also from my son's perspective, it's one of the most, um, attractive incentives for, uh, being a, a student in Birmingham City Schools. Uh, being able to graduate high school with sixty hours of college credit. Is probably one of the best deals in town, uh, certainly from the perspective of education. One of the things that I'm, I'm concerned about is, um, the, it's limited capacity currently. So, um, from talking with my son, um, my understanding is that there's, you know, there was a couple of dozen spots available, um, but hundreds of students that applied. And, uh, you know, from the perspective of this being an extremely, um, attractive incentive to enroll, you know, your children in Birmingham City Schools, um, I, I think that, you know, it would make sense, to sort of invest in, in that opportunity and expand it to, to other folks. So is the, the board and the administration discussing that?
Yes, that's a great question. Um, so yes, you are absolutely correct. We, we get a, I won't say a lot, but I know that Dr. Sullivan and I and, and especially, um, Mr. Phillips in the area, um, had been talking about how, um, the numbers enrollment are low and not because there's not an interest, it's just because of, um, facility. Uh, I guess space, uh, capacity, yeah, that's, that's a nice word to say. Capacity of space for students to be able to utilize or have access to the room that they need for it. And then the other thing in full transparency, I would say is probably faculty, um, the staff, being able to have the staff. And so, um, you know, it, it would be a great recruitment too. We, I personally don't want to see that program housed anywhere else. And so we've got to look at how do we keep it at Woodlawn High School and how are we able to fill all of those seats of students that are waiting to be enrolled in the program? And so that is a conversation that I would say, that I know Dr. Sullivan has been talking to his team about, the cabinet about, and how can they, um, how can we work on those two things? But yes, aware of, um, there's a number of students on the waiting list. And the other thing is I think it's a secret to people outside of, that are in Birmingham City Schools, but are not just a part of the east side community, right? So one of the things that people, um, are not familiar with is that like Birmingham City Schools has choice inside, right? So for instance, if I'm a student at, um, Winona High School and I want to take architecture or construction at Huffman, we have, the, the, the law, the policies allow for students to actually go from Winona to, um, to Huffman High School. The, the caveat is the transportation piece, but if a student wanted to do that, they could. And so again, um, helping the community understand that, um, it's not called, uh, what did I say when I first started? It's not called, um, um.
Vocational.
Vocational, right. It's not called vocational, uh, ed anymore, vocational tech, it's called, you know, C T E. So it's the same thing, just a different name, and then now the accessibility part. Personally, I've been challenging the district to be ready to provide transportation, but you know, that's a big cause, right? So if you get a number of kids that want to go from all over the place to different schools, but that's what makes and keep us attractive internally. So, um, I know at, at, uh, at Woodlawn High School, there's been some talk around, we have some virtual educators that, um, are, are teaching our students virtually because there are core courses that we actually need. And so I think that the district is doing, um, a good job at pivoting when we identify challenges and how we can try to dis-support. Uh, but there's always, uh, things that we can do to, to strengthen, especially like that, that early college program. Um, I know Dr. Falls is over there working with it, is doing a really good job of promoting it and trying to get folks enrolled. But again, the readiness of, um, our space, the capacity that we have is, is, is key. Thank you, thank y'all.
Well, no, thank you, thank you. Uh, I know that it was, it was definitely some information that, you know, uh, everybody would be able to take with them and, uh, and best utilize. And so, uh, we appreciate you for spending time with us and, and sharing it. I know Councilor Quinn was asking questions about, you know, connectivity between, you know, different careers within the city and, you know, uh, early college. And feel like that kind of is a great segue to, to move into Birmingham Promise, uh, with Ms. and, and some of the great things that you all are, are doing there as well. So.
Um, so I'm Samantha Williams and, you know, speaking of incentives to be in the school system, I think Birmingham Promise is like top, top, top. Didn't make the deck, but it's okay.
Should have, we apologize. It definitely should have been on the deck, it should have.
Because this year, the most number of students ever apply for Birmingham Promise from B C S. We had five hundred students, no duplicates, apply for scholarship support from Birmingham Promise. So that's almost half of the graduating classes apply. We'll know later this summer how many scholarships we're going to give out because then students will be making their final, final choice. They'll go through all the financial aid, they'll know if they need to change schools or if they're going to, you know, go out of state. But that's huge for us because we have been trying to figure out what is the ideal number of students that should be getting Birmingham Promise, which is a mixed bag of things you have to consider. How many students should be getting a post-secondary degree in B C S? If not that, what are they doing? And then what is our share of the students who are going to public institutions in Alabama? But this number tells us that the sky is really the limit, that more students will attend and get some type of credential if they can go without paying tuition. And a student who is, you know, full Pell eligible, they can go to a two-year college almost without paying anything because of their combination of Pell Grant and Birmingham Promise. So we're really pumped because this is a big time for Promise. Um, I have been over Birmingham Promise for a year and two months. And so for me, it has been a real whirlwind of building up our team's capacity, getting us out there into the community, hearing back from people, what do we, what do they want, what do they need from us? And so sending our team out to talk to younger and younger students that they know what's waiting for them when they finish high school in, in D C S. Um, and we're starting to see that pay off with some of these numbers that we're talking about. The other thing that is really also taking off is the internship program. So we're talking about connections to career and industry. Um, and so we placed fifty students across the city of Birmingham this spring at internships. And this fall, we have two hundred and sixty students who want to start internships. So we're doing fall internships for the first time, usually they're just the spring goes senior year. But we want students to have not only access to, you know, perhaps they need fall because of their schedule, but there are some places where a year-long internship will best serve the student and the company. So we want them to be able to have that option. So we're going to be dramatically trying to grow the number of, um, companies that partner with Birmingham Promise to hire our high school interns. And they do that, and I think it is a big sign of their investment in B C S students because most of them are paying full cost of the internship. So they're paying the student who gets fifteen dollars per hour, they're helping to cover the cost of, you know, payroll and insurance and things like that that normally Promise would have to fundraise for. They're saying, we want these students in our companies. Um, and so we have companies taking anywhere from one to five interns. And so we're going to, for the fall, be trying to get companies to take on more interns and get new companies. We actually tonight are having an event at the, um, it's not the About Wall, it's the.
Harvard Center.
Harvard Center, um, to celebrate our employers and our students. Um, if y'all want to attend, it's at five-thirty, most welcome to. Um, but that is where we share the story of our interns, of our interns, what they've done this year, what they've accomplished, and let employers also share what these students have meant to them. So the program is growing and growing, so we're going to have very different numbers in the next year than we've had before. Um, to date, we've provided a thousand scholarships to students from D C S. Um, the cost of those scholarships has been five point five million dollars that we've provided, and that doesn't include the payments from this spring. And so that will put us, you know, well over six million in scholarships directly to students. Um, we have partnerships with U A B where U A B covers the half of the cost of the tuition to help Promise manage our costs and our fundraising needs. And we're pursuing that same partnership with University of Alabama. I actually came here from Tuscaloosa, we're just working through all of those things. Um, and so the idea is that more of our institutions help us meet the costs to make it more sustainable. But also because for them, it's a very good bet. We're bringing students who will have a success coach to Birmingham Promise, which enables them to meet with someone on a monthly basis, one-on-one. They have quarterly meetings with all the other Promise scholars, so you've got the peer mentoring effect. And we're helping them navigate their academic adventure. And so with that level of support for students who nationally have a lower completion rate, this is an incentive for the institutions to help us out and come use at the table, and we're coming with guaranteed funding. So we are trying to meet the need on whatever it takes for students to have a successful life after they finish high school, whether it's the scholarship program to get a two or four-year credential or the internship program. And then the last thing, and, you know, there's plenty more to talk about, so I'll take your questions. But, you know, the last part of our work is the apprenticeship program, which is meant to be a way for students who are not getting a traditional four-year degree, who need to work, who want to work, who see that as their thing. But to help them get the opportunity to work while still being connected to education to get a type of credentialing. So we're piloting that at Regions Bank. Students are learning how to be loan officers and then the idea is that they will continue studying finance, you know, management at Lawson State. The thing is, we got students into that program this year and all of them decided to go to college. So for us, it's like our end goal is a path for every student. We see that as, you know, net, net, it's a very good thing, but what we've got to figure out now, and we're all sort of, you know, taking back what we've learned from that and saying, okay, great, something good happened at that apprenticeship that got the students thinking about college. But we still need to serve the students who don't think that they're going to go to college. The students, when they walk across that stage on June second, are not going into any type of training or, you know, work with high mobility. Going into workforce is fine, but we don't want students going straight into jobs that they'll be, you know, still earning the same type of wage twenty years from now. So how do we make sure to create some type of apprenticeship or work-based learning program to meet students who still need something concrete after college? So those are some of the things that we are working on right now. Our team, we're twenty folks, six of those folks are out there going to visit the students. They're the students' success coaches. We have a smaller work-based learning team managing the internship program and apprenticeship program. Um, our budget this year, we're trying to raise seven point eight million dollars to cover scholarships, to cover some of the cost of training students for our internship and apprenticeship program. Um, but we are, you know, we're going to have our first class of all four classes of students in college. So our twenty twenty-four budget and operations are going to shift because we'll now be seeing what Promise looks like when you've got students in all four years. I think that's the broad strokes, but I'm very curious to hear what kind of questions y'all have because it helps us to think about sort of what we're doing. You know, people, you know, think about Promise as something that's always been here, but this is our, you know, we're finishing our third year. So we've got a lot to learn and to grow.
So first of all, thank you for that information. I just wanted to kind of go back a little bit. You said that, um, you all have students that were learning to be loan officers?
Yeah.
That is like a really big deal.
Yeah.
I want to say, is that the, was that one of the young ladies that came to our, uh?
Destiny?
I think so, she came out.
Destiny Miles Nelson, she graduated from U A B early.
Yeah, she came to our city council meeting.
Yeah, no, she was just, she did an internship through Birmingham Promise in high school, she did the early college. And then at U A B, she was continuing to work at Jones Valley, and now she has just like a full-out job with Regions.
Got you.
And apparently they like are all just over, like completely enamored by her, just over the moon. Our board chair is at Regions and he's like, she's a bigger celebrity than anybody else. Everyone's like, when are we going to talk to Destiny?
Yeah.
But she's also such a cool person and just very focused.
That, that's a real game changer. Uh, I mean, being able to develop that skill and, you know, have that knowledge, uh, could be extremely transformational for any young person. So, uh, but now, Councilor Quinn, I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah, um, in terms of the internships and the internships, um, what grade level are those available to?
Seniors.
Okay. Um, in terms, so I, I think about, you know, families that have, um, the generational wealth, you know, and, um, you know, in particular families that, you know, own a business. And if, if you're a child in that family, um, you grow up, you know, learning the business. And, you know, nobody has the expectation that, you know, if mom brings her daughter to work, that they're, um, that, you know, the, the ten-year-old is going to be, you know, actually producing, you know, uh, for, for the company. But that exposure, um, is definitely, even though the kid may not realize, you know, that they're being exposed, just being in that environment and being able to, um, learn, you know, just like the, the culture of, of, of business and, um, is something that has value. And so I guess I'm curious in, in, in the long-term view of Promise, is it sort of on you, you guys' timeline for at some point in the future to give those opportunities to, um, other age groups?
So there are tiers, I guess, of work-based learning support for students. We need to start in middle school with certain activities. Those are your job shadowing, those are your career fairs, those are your bring a child to work type things to give students exposure, moving up from middle school, ninth grade, tenth grade. We believe that we can get people to invest in eleventh grade internships for students. Um, but, you know, even with the seniors, it's more challenging. Some of our places really, really want their students to be eighteen, some of our labs and some of the banks and, you know, they, the age is a challenge. But we're getting it done by finding lots of different internships. Our vision is that every single graduate from B C S would have had a workplace learning experience and internship. As long as we can find the placements for them, we would like to put them in an internship because we're looking for companies, and this is why I am optimistic about what companies think about B C S. I mean, we're looking for companies who are paying four thousand dollars a semester for a student who they are doing a ton of teaching to and exposing. This is how meetings are run. This is a professional dress code. This is how you prepare to, prepare an agenda. This is how you go on a site visit. This is what it looks like to be at a construction site and not just doing construction, but what does the management look like? Like showing them all those things. And then we talk to the companies, they'll describe what they give back from the students too. I mean, the students come with wit and, you know, quick observations, they're thoughtful. They obviously come with tech skills that, you know, everyone talks about. But the students are given back to the companies, but not in the way of an employee. So we need to make sure we can grow with enough companies that will continue to make that investment. And the student needs to be old enough for it not to be, to not, you know, just to be frank, for it just not to be like they're just watching this student, don't know what to do with them. But there are activities that you can do for at least the last six. But there are activities that you can do for at least the last six years of a child's time in the school system. And we are trying to build up to do those activities all along the way for every student. And so, you know, next year is moving toward the right track, over two hundred students, placing them across fall and spring, growing that, building that. That's the path that we're trying to get on, more and more and more opportunities.
Councilor Williams? Uh yeah, no, I really liked the the program, everything here kinda represents, I know, and this is one of the the things I was interested in was like, what does this actually look like? Once you got four years in, and like what that, what those numbers look like? And so you said that you were doing around seven or eight.
Yeah.
And that was support, basically, all four years of, and that's really cool, so like, you said a lot of stuff today that I haven't known. And so one of my concerns is like, how do we best like keep up with what's happening? And so uh like reporting, things like that, getting, being able to understand like how many kids.
Yeah.
That are in college, how many went like last year, and just getting that information, and so. Uh how did, like, how do y'all do that? How do we go about like actually getting some of the reporting back on like, you know, whether it be the previous year? Or just kinda updated things like, so I don't know, this was like internships for junior seniors. And but yeah, just being able to keep up with like, what 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 is the actual uh things happening in the program, because I think a lot's changed, even the way you did, you do the math on. Uh with the benefits um from initially, so on the front end, we got a lot of pretty in-depth, like this is what we're doing, but really since then, not being able to just kinda keep up with like. What what is the actual reality and how can we get like that in year reporting, just to know like, how many kids are are participating in this? How many kids like from my district are participating in this, um things like that.
Yeah.
Uh like now, we're not getting really anything, so I'm gonna get in the flow of um of what that looks like, so I don't know how y'all do that, but how do we play into that?
Yeah, so we, when I got there, I realized that we needed to have an annual report that goes out to the community, to all of our stakeholders, everyone who's investing in them. So our annual report from twenty twenty-two is coming out quite belatedly, but it's coming out in the next couple of weeks. And so we've we've done this meeting, normally I would say, what I would would suggest is that around the time of our annual report, we do this. I come share with y'all, we go through the numbers, we look at it, college, you know, the college numbers, the high school numbers, and go through that. So we can do that in December for the twenty twenty-three annual report, and I'll send you all the copy of the twenty twenty-two report when it finally comes back from our our publishers. Cause we, I feel like the organization has just gone through a lot of transition and then building clarity on what we're doing. You know, the founding executive director came out of the city and she got that organization up and running. And then, you know, now we're moving into a place where we're putting in place more systems, we're growing the staff, we're putting in place all our things. So I think we're gonna be in a place where we can very reliably commit to, like easily to annual reporting, but, you know, even more frequently. If, you know, if y'all wanna have different touchpoints, I mean, thing is, right up the street, and so we, I can come here anytime, we can send you all those reports. We could put you on, if you want it to have, um you know, sort of like a different type of dashboard or something that we share with some of our other donors. You know, they're looking at our internship numbers or things like that, you know, happy to do that. I think it's just tell us what you need, and we can get that to you, we're investing a lot this year in data and impact measurement. Because by the time we have those seniors graduate next May, we wanna be able to tell anybody in the world exactly where every child is and what they're doing. So we're getting our systems up, so it's sort of like a, you know, bear with us a little bit, but everything we have, happy to share. You know, we're not keeping anything secret. So I'll do that, I'll make sure to follow up with the annual report, at least a, you know, an e-copy for everybody. And then this, at the end of this calendar year, let's talk about another sort of report out on the the twenty twenty-three annual report, with those new numbers.
No, I think that would be good, um especially knowing how many, you know, people are within each district, uh just so that we would be able to just be aware.
Yeah.
And the rest of that information, so um.
I think the high school information will be really interesting to y'all, we were just at Huffman, uh we actually met that young man in the presentation, who has, has over five million dollars in scholarship offers by himself. Um but Huffman was the first, this is the first year that Huffman overtook Ramsey as the number of, the highest number of Promise scholars um in applications. So, you know, there are a lot, we can definitely give y'all a lot of really good data relevant to your district and how folks are doing. And we'd love to think with y'all about some of our schools where we're not seeing the numbers that we would expect, given how many kids there are. Let's talk about that, because it's not just college, it is the plan, it's the path, what are you doing, each child, what are you doing? And so we would love to see where we have gaps, to make sure that at least those children are being served with some type of planning for after they graduate.
And currently, I just wanna go back uh for clarity, so you said there are five hundred uh young people that are currently in the Birmingham Promise program?
Well, who are applying to go to college this fall through Birmingham Promise.
Gotcha.
So high school seniors.
Gotcha, it's a big deal.
Can I ask a question? Those five hundred, have they all met the requirements that you all have on the front end as well? Okay. I know we have students that will apply, but there are components in the application requirement that's required that they haven't finished.
That's why, I mean, when my team told me the numbers, I was just like, please go back. Have they done the faster, have they done, have they done that? And then they came back and said, yes, they got rid of all the duplicates, all the people who were not finished application, I was like, oh, okay.
That's great, that's great.
Kids are serious.
That's great.
And so we'll see what it actually shakes out to, cause some of them might be waiting to get their last scholarships and see if they can go out of state, or if they can go to private college. So we'll see what it shakes out to, cause we just cover, of course, public in Alabama. But it'll still be our highest number, and it will still indicate to me, you know, we've, the the nu- our goal for how many students we can serve for Promise can go up. It's historically been about three hundred and forty seniors applying each year, it can go up.
Okay, that's great.
Well, thank you so much for sharing that information, or, as you have a little.
Yeah, I have just a curiosity um for President Williams. So one of the, the, I think the highest uh at-risk um group quotes that I'm I'm concerned about is um. Are kids that don't complete high school, you know, that that drop out and not further or whatever, I mean, they're. I don't see if they they realize it at the time, but that um, you know, is gonna be a social determinant for them for the rest of their lives. Um so what's our 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 current dropout rate and, you know?
Address that, right?
I'm just curious.
Yeah, so um finally, something I don't know the answer to, I do not know the answer to our current dropout rate. Um I I know some colleagues and I, we've been having uh quite a few conversa- different conversations around like what a year thirteen would look like, right? Trying to capture those students who graduate or not, and then they realize life is lifing, right? Like I I've been for thirteen years, you know, kindergarten through twelfth grade, going to school every year in August, having something to do, there's a system, and then all of a sudden now. I've either graduated, or, you know, I decided to leave school early for whatever life reasons, how do we capture those students? Um and some of those students have actually come back, the numbers are low, that have come back through like our virtual academy of learning. Um I don't know if you all know that, but Birmingham City Schools now have what's called a VAAL program, it's actually not a program, it's a VAAL school, excuse me. Um and so it's the virtual academy of learning where those students who um essentially fall in that category where they've dropped out. Um and maybe they are um a little bit older than they should be to actually go back into a traditional setting, but they want to receive a high school diploma. So they're able to go to the virtual academy of learning, um and then dropout recovery, the drop, now dropout recovery is a program. That is designed to capture some of those students who have dropped out. That actual number of, you know, what that dropout rate is, I am not sure. We're being told that our counselor counselors in the schools try their best to identify and um try to locate those students to see where they are. Um in fact, the state requires that, because some actually transfer to other districts and it may not, um you know, be up to par uh in the system systemically. But I do think that there is something that um that needs to be done to identify those students that, you know, have dropped out, because there are a number of students who have. They just feel like, you know, I don't, they, life, right, whether that is um them being the eldest child in their family, having to take care of younger siblings. Like there there are a lot of different things that are happening, and so um uh you know, we we are doing. A consistent job of trying to keep, you know, keep our thumb on the students that we know we have enrolled, but also those students who decide to drop out are important to us as well, so. Um and then, you know, there are programs, small partnerships, there's a church that we have a partnership with that's on, um I wanna say it's in North Birmingham. Can't call out the exact name of the church, but for a number of years, it's been a site where students that maybe have dropped out from BCS have gone there to get their GED. So they're going through different programs that is in partnership with BCS. Um we would rather encourage those students to stay in school and be able to find a career path um that's important to them, but uh, yeah, it's. We serve an urban community on the city council and as well as, you know, the school board, so we know we have some of those challenges that are there. Good question, I could I can find out, you know, what is our current dropout rate?
Well, awesome, Will, first of all, again, thank y'all so much for sharing that information. Um I know that it's it's helpful for us to to know how we can best support BCS, as well as, you know, um how we can stay more aware of what Birmingham Promise is doing. So that we can uh better support our students, um so, thank you, um let me see, move on. I I know with the Birmingham Public Library, we had an opportunity to fill those two vacancies um on the board, and so just wanted to. Uh welcome back Ms. Lynn Flowers Martin, who will serve another term beginning uh now through December thirty-first uh of twenty twenty-seven. And uh newly appointed Ms. Dana Woodruff, who will serve her first term beginning now through December thirty-first twenty twenty-seven as well. So uh thrilled to have both of them uh and their leadership on the board. Um we know that they'll bring a lot of creativity and insight, uh and so looking forward to that. Um if you are interested in attending a a library board meeting, the board meets every second Tuesday of each month at four thirty P M. Uh their next meeting will be uh take place on Tuesday, June thirteenth at the Tittysville Branch Library, um so please check that out. Um as we learn, uh in terms of announcements, uh the last day of school for students is gonna be on Thursday, June eighth.
That's correct.
All right, and graduation starts June second?
It's June first and second.
June first and second, okay?
Actually, on our calendars, it's May the thirty-first, June first and second, May thirty-first is supposed to be our virtual academy of learning students who are graduating. And then um June first, half of our high schools, and then June second, the other half, I don't know no matter, which ones, I just know half and half.
So May thirty-first, June first, and June second.
Yes.
Graduations, okay. Um and then also just wanna make sure that we encourage, you know, uh parents to, you know, oh, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm on two thirty, I'm so sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
Thanks, y'all.
Um we just wanna make sure that, you know, uh we come back in summer slide. Um and so really wanna encourage parents to uh take time to, you know, engage their students in in reading or some type of academic activity. We have, you know, several uh different things, you know, or resources and and gyms in our city. Uh where you could, you know, take them to the McWayne Science Center, the Zoo, Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. Uh but really just wanna engage our young people in some type of educational activity during the summertime, uh and more specifically around reading. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to read a book to them, but, you know, it'd be cool if you could, you know, y'all get in the kitchen together and, you know, read through some recipes. Or, you know, get you a dresser or something from Ikea and, you know, read some some directions, put something together. But uh just some type of, some type of reading, um because reading and literacy is is really a skill. You know, and if if something is a skill, it's something that can be worked on, something that can be improved uh over time, and so um just making sure that, you know, um. That we do that, because as you mentioned earlier, you know, the Alabama Literacy Act is a real thing, um and, you know, it could drastically impact, you know, a lot of uh families. And so um we know that we as parents and, you know, as community members, we need to do our part to support the work that you all are doing inside of the schools. And so um we just wanna, we wanna encourage parents to do that. Um so yeah, um I think that is all that I have, let me see. Um last thing before we adjourn, uh due to Juneteenth holiday on Monday, um if we receive any submissions for the next education committee meeting. We'll uh move it up to Monday, June fifth at one. Um so if you would like to submit an item for the agenda, please submit the item by Wednesday, May thirty-first, by four thirty P M. To Terry Chapman at terry.chapman@birminghamao.gov. Um that's all I got, uh hearts and miles clue? Okay, cool.
Let's adjourn.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.